First and foremost, thanks so much for being here tonight. For those of you that I haven't had an opportunity to meet, I don't think there are many of you, but I'm Peter Noonan. I'm the superintendent of schools here in the city of Falls Church. And this evening, my partner Wyatt Shields says, you're doing such a great job as master of ceremonies, you just kick us off. And I said, thanks Wyatt. So anyway, my job is to just sort of get us going and again, welcome you to this beautiful space that really represents a team journey between the general government, the schools, city council, and the school board. We wouldn't be sitting here if, you know, six, eight years ago, seven years ago, we hadn't really put our heads together, our work together to, one, first pass the bond referendum, but before that, doing all of the economic modeling that showed that we were going to be successful. And by all right, up to this point, everything that was modeled and everything that was discussed really has come to fruition. And look no further than the big development that's next to us that we're really looking forward to, some pretty significant revenue generation in the years to come to, again, help offset the cost of the debt service for our high schools. So just a big congratulations to all of you that have been here or lived in the city that many years ago, that supported this work. And it really has been, and I'll steal Mary Beth's old analogy of the zipper, you remember the zipper that would come together? And it was sort of the two sides of the schools and school board, city government, coming together to make it happen. And we are, we're getting zipped up across the way here, and that's a great thing. So I'm really pleased to serve this very brief moment as your master of ceremonies, and I'm stopping now. And I'm going to turn it over to Laura Downs, our board chair, for any comments that you'd like to make to welcome. And then you can pass it off to Mayor Tarter, and then we'll begin with our presentations.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, I have a birthday.
Oh, no, no.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, your birthday present is too present. Yeah, so thank you, thank you, Dr. Noonan. And it's great to be here today and to see everyone here. And again, congratulations to our newly elected school board members and our newly elected city council members, and best wishes to all of those of us who are rolling off. It's just, I just, I won't say much, but just this is very gratifying to be in this space tonight, and as Dr. Noonan said, look over this commercial development, which is why we could build this beautiful building. And it's, we really just appreciate your partnership for the past, since I've been on the board, you know, four years now and before that. And it's been terrific to see all this commercial revenue coming in and things that are, it's going to be coming in greater and greater as this, as everything comes online. So I think we're all really looking forward to that, that revenue coming in. And, you know, I think one of the pieces I know that we'll talk about a little bit is that our schools are growing as a result, so this is all connected. So I think we're going to have a nice conversation about how that all interacts. So I'll turn it over to you Wyatt. Thank you.
Mayor.
Mayor, how could I forget the mayor? Here you go, Mayor Tarter, thanks so much.
All right, thank you Laura. I'll be brief as well, but I just want to celebrate the collaboration that we've had the schools and the city these past few years, and reiterate how fruitful they have been for our community. For years, people were talking about this new school we're sitting in right now, and people said it couldn't be done. And yet, through some really hard work, and some compromise and collaboration, here we are with a state-of-the-art school that tomorrow, I guess, is a ceremony for solar panels, right? Net zero ready. So really reflective of our values, I think, as a community, as a city, education being at the forefront of it. So I think we can do some great things together, and I think there's many, much more fuel in the tank, so look forward to further collaboration as we go forward. But thank you all.
Well, Peter just told me to talk real quickly. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Peter. Our order tonight is, Peter will speak about some of the strategic needs of the, uh-oh. Are we, are we broadcasting? Any other birthdays coming up? So Peter's going to talk about some of the planning that the school staff have been doing for FY25. And, and I will then make a few introductory comments about, about budgeting from the, from the general government perspective. And I will introduce Kiran Bawa, who will provide a revenue forecast for tonight. And then after that, we will have our, the Fuller Institute will join us to give a presentation on their projections on growth that is happening in the city and trends that are happening. And they're very impactful for school enrollment, but also very impactful for how we are growing generally as a city. And that's thematically very much what we're talking about in terms of planning for FY25. So I'm glad, glad that I could provide this service. And so Peter, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Nice, nice dance. Appreciate it. All right, so good evening, everybody. It's really great to see you. Happy birthday Laura. We'll probably talk about that a few more times. I have the honor and privilege this evening to talk about our fiscal forecast for Falls Church City Public Schools. I didn't step on anything that time, I promise. Just in a bad spot. So this has always been a really important night, I think, for all of us, to be able to come together collectively and share each of our, our values, our goals, our missions, our visions together, to help us sort of come together to figure out how we're going to work, to make sure that we continue to provide the very best services to the students and to the citizens of Falls Church. And tonight is no different, and I'm very excited to be able to talk about some of that work here with you tonight. So let me start by just saying this, and that is that we value the partnership. I value the partnership with my, my counterpart on the general government side, Wyatt Shields, and the city government just in general, that we are part of, along with the relationship that we have with the city council. As it's been said, without that relationship, we wouldn't have many of the things that we have. And tonight, we are hoping that we can share with you some of our work, so that we can continue to maintain that really strong partnership. For the last six years, we have, well, this will be the sixth year, we have worked very closely together around this notion of a revenue sharing agreement. We believe strongly in that revenue sharing agreement. And to that end, what has been created out of that has been some really good dialogue, but also, excuse me, at the same time, really an opportunity for us to not have what may have been some historical consternation across the city of Falls Church relative to budgets. And that's been really helpful to us. So we, we like you, want to continue to support the community, support our schools, and be really good partners alongside. Last year, I shared that we had just developed a new strategic plan here in the city of Falls Church, and I won't go into all of the gory details of the strategic plan. You certainly can go online and find those for yourselves, but there are a couple of things I just wanted to pop up here, just to kind of put back on your radar. It's our mission and the vision that we have for our work, and I think that it's borne out as you walk into our new school here even. The first thing you see on the right-hand side is sort of an homage to the International Baccalaureate Program that really speaks to the values. If you look at, if you look at that profile of an IB learner, what you'll see are all the things that we want all of our kids in the city of Falls Church to be when they leave. And I think what our work here and in our presentation tonight allows us to build towards that, beginning in pre-K, all the way up through high school. And, and we're excited to share that. These are our core values. These are what are ultimately our plan was built upon. And so just to share quickly, you know, being a student-centered community, obviously, we are here for kids. That's why we, why we exist, to support them. We believe that we are working towards and continue to be a wholly responsive and accountable system. We've developed some new processes and procedures to be even more transparent in our decision-making processes. Since the arrival of Kristin Michael, our budget process is 100% transparent and accountable. Our academic success has been huge. Through the leadership of Dr. William Bates is with us tonight, and the academic side of the house, we have been able to share loudly and proudly that we are back to pre-pandemic learning and even exceeding pre-pandemic learning, while others across the country continue to lag. We consider ourselves to be a highly inclusive and valuing of diversity in our community. And lastly, working hard on building community connections and being relational. One of the things that's really, I think, special, and when we think about what is the secret sauce that makes Falls Church City Public Schools what it is, it really is the relationships that we have with our families, with our community, and with our students. These commitments I won't read to you, but all of them are reflected in sort of those core values that I just shared. But these, these are the things that we look at each day to say, are we meeting what the expectations of the community are? And I can say that with very strong certainty, and that is because we had over 1,000 people from across the city help us develop the strategic plan and really engage in it deeply and, and worked closely with us with the development. So if you have time and you'd like to look at those, they really do speak to who we are. The five strategic areas that were born out of our, ultimately born out of our strategic planning process might sound familiar. The first is IB-infused teaching and learning. We are a pre-K-12 IB school division. I don't know if the council knows this or not, but I wanted just to let everybody in the room know that about two months ago, we held the first ever International Baccalaureate School Conference here at Meridian High School for school divisions that are pre-K-12 or K-12 institutions and districts across the country. We had about 200 people come as part of the conference from as far away as Ohio and Tennessee, and as close as Arlington and Fairfax. We booked out the Hilton. They all stayed there. They ate breakfast there, they had lunch there, they had dinner there. But it was a really nice opportunity for us, one, to learn professionally, but also, two, to really work towards the economic development of the city and be a really great partner to bring folks in. So we continue to maintain our focus on being the very best IB school division in the country and in the world. And I can say, again, very, very candidly and not boastfully, but just, we feel like we're in a really good position as we've met with those colleagues from around the country. We believe this year, as part of our work in the strategic plan, that wellness, equity, and belonging, or WEB for short, is one of the areas of emphasis for us, that we really, we really want students, as they're coming back, even two years post-pandemic, that they're feeling strong, and they're feeling a sense of belonging, and there's good emotional and physical wellness. We believe that we, we should continue to maintain as a strategic outcome for ourselves, being really great stewards of public resources, making sure that we use our resource management processes well, and that we continue to look for ways to get better. As a learning organization, we believe that you have to be continuously improving to really show who you are as a, as an org, organization, and we're happy about that. Communications engagement, speak for themselves, and the last is investing in our people. We are, and we'll share with you soon, the largest employer in Falls Church City. And as a consequence of that, you know, one of the things, the largest public, I should say, and one of the things that we're excited about is making sure that our people are well taken care of. They take care of our kids here in the community, and we equally want to take care of them. So if you're interested in seeing how we're doing, we do have measures and metrics around each of these items that are part of our strategic plan. And if you'll go out onto the internet, you can see on these hot links, there are some really nice pages that actually show sort of red, yellow, green, to give us a sense of how we're making progress towards our strategic plan. And I, and we have a great team of folks that are working on that, and it continues to evolve. So let me, let me kind of continue here with, now that our, we're getting to the budget piece a little bit more, and just sort of that as background. This is not all showing, so let me pull it up here just a little bit. Scroll up. This is our enrollment in this current year. And there are a couple of things that I want to just sort of point out to you as we think about our current enrollment. You've heard a lot, Nick Benton in the Falls Church News Press has written about it, but we certainly have more kids this year than we anticipated. We're actually 85 students more than were projected last year by the Weldon Cooper Center. We've had an opportunity to do the analysis of where those students are coming from, and this year's student growth is not necessarily coming from all of the economic development that's been happening in the city. Rather, where we're seeing those students come from, when we do the deep analysis, is from single-family homes. And I don't know if people are, that have had a house, that they're empty nesters now, and they've decided to move, and families are moving in. We've seen quite a number of houses that have been sold and then scraped, and new houses are going up that are much bigger. But when we, when we do the analysis, the vast majority of the students that we're seeing that are coming in that are new are coming from single-family homes. That being said, we are still seeing some other places where they're popping. So as part of your packet of materials that you received tonight, and it was on board docs as well, is the annual where do they come from list. And that seems to be a favorite of everyone's, to see, you know, what are those yields of students from housing stock, from, like, from apartments and the like. So 85 over projection, but we ended up 100 more than we had last year. So we were projected to grow by a certain amount, but we ended up even with more students than what we projected, plus, plus some. So we're at 100 students more than we had last year. Just to give you a sense of kind of where the students are that we're seeing, where the most growth is that we're seeing, if you look at this chart, and, and I would just point you to the end here, we're seeing 23 more students at Mount Daniel, 31 students more at Oak Street, and 30 more at Henderson. And when you look at the schedules and the way students break, the good news is 100 second graders didn't move in, right? Because that would be problematic. Or the bad news is, we got a, not the bad news, the news is that we have 100 more students, but they're across the system. So when we think about where we're seeing some of the bulging, because of the way class schedules work and class placements work, is we're seeing the greatest impact at elementary, at Oak Street and at, at Mount Daniel. At the middle school, because students have seven classes and they're rotating, the 30 more students are, are a little bit more diffuse than students by grade level. So I wanted to give you that information right off the bat. And here you'll see our enrollment over time. So if you look back to 2019, we were at 2645, and now we're at 2634. So who are the students that we're serving? And this is a slide that I like to share, because it gives us a sense of who, what is the profile of the student that we're seeing that are coming into Falls Church. And one of the things that struck me immediately when I looked at this chart is that we, we've grown by 37% in students that are in poverty in our schools. So we have 308 students that are on free and reduced lunch. Last year, we had 225 students that are on free and reduced lunch. And that's not an insignificant jump, because we're only a school division of 2,700. So we're seeing a large number of students that are coming in that need free and reduced lunch. We're seeing a 5% growth, which is relatively slow, by the way, of students with disabilities. We have about 16% more students have come in with 504 plans. And for those of you that might not be familiar, a 504 plan is, a student may have a handicap condition or a disability, but it's not one that requires an IEP or a special ed intervention. So we have a number of kids, for example, that are attention deficit hyperactivity disorder that just need some modifications in the classroom. That doesn't require an IEP. It just means that we're going to have a meeting with the counselor and memorialize some of the things that we'll do to support them in classrooms. We've seen a growth in students with, who are speakers of other languages. Last year, we had 124 students. This year, we have 139. We have seen our enrollment and homeschool continue to drop post-pandemic. You'll see at the height of the pandemic, we had 69 students that were homeschooled, and we're back to pre-pandemic homeschool conditions, which is about 34. And then we did see a development in a few more students taking us up on our tuition rate. And right now, we're at 25 students excluding Jesse Thackeray preschool that are tuition-paying students. Just for the good of the order, I want to let everybody know, we have closed our tuition-paying opportunities for anyone who's out of the city at our, we had closed it across the school system. Up until last week, we're going to reopen it at the secondary based on space available, but we're still closed at the elementary. So we're not taking more students to create more burden in our, in our schools. Here's a chart that sort of shows historical enrollment patterns. One of the things that's interesting to me is sort of the high watermark was 2017, 2018, kind of leveled off, then the pandemic hit, and there was a pretty significant dip. But you'll see, the trend line is starting to go up again. And, and we'll, we'll hear more about that in this presentation, and then we have our, our friends here from the Fuller Institute that I know are going to share some information tonight as well. Just quickly, I think everybody's familiar with the Weldon Cooper Center at the University of Virginia. We have traditionally used the Weldon Cooper Center for our information, and those projections come from a variety of different places. First, it begins with birth data, then on top of that, it's historical and current fall membership, and those students are tracked across cohorts. That's typically how well, not typically, but that is how Weldon Cooper does their projections. The one thing that Weldon Cooper doesn't do is they don't take into account any contextual information from the community for which they're providing any projections for. And so through a really great partnership with Wyatt Shields and the general government, you won't be able to read this, so I'll just tell you what it says. We, we did get the Stephen Fuller Institute involved, and they have come in and have done a really deep dive in the city of Falls Church, looking at all of the current, past, current, and future housing stock that are here in the city of Falls Church, which gives us a much better understanding and depth of knowledge around what is our enrollment going to look like as we continue over the next several years. So when we look at our enrollment rates here, these are the September 30 enrollment forecasts. There's one number that we are paying close attention to, and that is this number of 2719. So this is this year, this column 2023, and at the bottom is 2634. That's our current enrollment. We are looking at 2719 as sort of our number potentially for next year. And one way we can look at that to maybe help with facilitation of understanding is this black line, leading up to the solid black line that's vertical, is our traditional, our, our traditional enrollment over the last couple of years. The dotted line is if we looked at continuing to grow at the pre-pandemic rate that we were growing, because if, if we didn't have any new students move in for any reason, we would continue to grow, but much more steadily over time. But the dotted line is if we grew at pre-pandemic conditions and we added in the new housing stock, right? That's in the city. And so, so that's the dotted line. The bottom line is the purple line, that's the Weldon Cooper Center's projection for us. And then the middle line is the Stephen Fuller Institute's line that, that we are really paying close attention to, because that shows where we are growing just based on the new housing stock that's coming into the city, but doesn't take into account if we were back in pre-pandemic growth conditions. So if there were a moment in time where people said, you know what, we moved to the coast of Maine because we could work remotely, but we really want to go back to Falls Church. And if all those people that left during the pandemic moved back to the city of Falls Church and were included, and, and we filled out our housing, housing stock, we would be at this dotted line. Hope that makes sense. The delta between the well, the delta between the Stephen Fuller Institute yellow line and this dotted line is about 200 kids. I believe that's right, is it 100 or 200? I'm trying to remember. I think, I think it's 100. We'll go with 100. Is 100 kids. So if we were to get back to that, it would be rather significant. So we're actually looking at this yellow line as our growth trend going forward. So what does that mean for us? And let me, let me just start with this, and that is that every budget has a story that goes with it. And I want to just make sure that I'm abundantly clear with the fact that we are, we knew we were going to grow here in the city of Falls Church. You all knew that we were going to grow here in the city of Falls Church. We've built the infrastructure out to make sure that we were ready to grow with respect to buildings and grounds and the like. We built this brand-new high school that has room to grow. We've got the fourth floor and the fifth floor that have three spaces on each that will allow for more classrooms if we need to build it out in the future. We can build on top of the gym at Mary Ellen Henderson if we ever needed to do an addition there. There was an addition put on at Oak Street a little bit more than a decade ago to allow for growth. Mount Daniel, when I first got here, we got that project off the ground and done, so that we could continue to grow at Mount Daniel. And then Jesse Thackeray was acquired. So there's not a building in our system that we didn't anticipate growth to come from, or to. And here they come, right? And so we're ready, and we're excited about it, and we think that this growth in our system will be really good for us academically, socially, and otherwise. So, so what we're looking at for next year, remember, we had 100 more students this year. We are anticipating next year to grow by 85 more students. So that would be 185 over that two-year period. And then when we look at the out year following that, we're anticipating about 115 more. So we are looking at a growth of about, of an average of about 100 students each year. We do see that beginning to sort of stabilize a little bit, because the housing stock that's going to be out there as it fills is going to be capped at some point. But for the next three years, we are, or next two years, we are anticipating some substantive growth. So some of the things that we always continue to pay attention to as we're thinking about this, is how do we make sure that we continue to meet the obligations that our community expects of us with maintaining great class sizes? One of the things that I said at the beginning is we're really relational, and we know our kids, and we want to stay connected to our kids. And then how do we continue to be the very best school system that we can be, to be able to monitor, differentiate instruction, and support students that need extra time and support for learning, and also extend and enrich for students that can get there? So in order for us to do that, we think, based on the growth this year and the anticipated growth next year, that we need to hire six new teachers and two new paraprofessionals to meet the need. We anticipate that almost all of those staff exclusively will go to the two elementary schools to keep those class sizes, where we staff them at Mount Daniel at 22 to 1, and at Oak Street at 24 to 1. So some other, so that's a pretty significant cost driver to us. So some other cost drivers with respect to the schools are salary, right? And like you, we all are trying to invest in our people and make sure that we not only attract, but, but maintain and retain the best people that we can find. We are, again, the largest public employer in Falls Church City with over 500 people on our payroll. So retention and recruitment's really important to us. For us to do a step, we are in a step-in grade system. That's a standard practice across all school divisions in the country. Each step for us is approximately $1 million, and every 1% of a cost of living adjustment for us equates to $455,000. So if we wanted to do, for example, a 1% cost of living adjustment, we would budget $455,000. If we wanted a 2%, it'd be $910,000, and so on and so forth. Some of the things that we're dealing with, like everyone else, are the inflationary pressures around the region. Good news is, it does seem like inflation is cooling a bit right now. So this time last year, the CIP, or CPI was 8.7%, and this year, it's 3.2%. So we are seeing the, the Consumer Price Index sort of fluctuating down towards something that shows a little bit less inflation. The other thing we have to pay attention to in the context of our budget is really good teacher retention and recruitment. There is a national teacher shortage. I think everybody here knows that. We've been working very closely with our partners at the universities. We've been working with our partners that are in neighboring districts. We've been making policy change here in the division that would make it more attractive to come to the city of Falls Church. Since I'm on camera, I will let our folks in Arlington know, we do offer Kaiser Permanente as an option for our healthcare. I know some people in Arlington are not happy because they don't have Kaiser options anymore. I guess that was gratuitous, wasn't it? Anyway, anyway. So, so we are trying to do some things in our system that make it even more attractive to come to the city of Falls Church, and we have been successful with bringing people over from a variety of different school divisions, whether regionally or otherwise. But that teacher shortage for us is a challenge, and some of you may have heard, some of the dust-up that we had at the beginning of the year, we didn't have two teachers at Oak Street for the first time in the history that I know of of Falls Church. We didn't, we weren't fully staffed on day one, and, and that was really terrible. And it's through no fault of anyone's, except we just don't have a swath of people out there to hire. And then we, again, sort of that regional competition is extremely fierce for us. Like, like the general government, we share insurance companies, and we are anticipating a 10% growth in healthcare costs this coming year. So that for us represents about $400,000. And then we are seeing some, some changes in the retirement system. We don't know where they're going to land at this point, but right now, it is recommended that the rate be decreased for school systems, and we'll kind of see how that plays out. And then we also want to thank the city for the reduction of the city retirement system that's going to save us $250 next year. So that, that's a, every little bit helps kind of moment. All right. I don't know why it keeps going. I don't know why it keeps going away. But so here's what we anticipate in terms of our forecast for expenditures as we're thinking in this space. The first is for those enrollment growth positions, we're looking at about $600,000. A step increase is $1 million. A 3% cost-of-living adjustment is $1.4 million. With the insurance adjustment, we're looking at $400,000. We do have some unavoidable costs. For example, utilities are going up. Contract costs are going up and the like. So we're anticipating about a half a million-dollar addition there. And then we did do a school-based budget request. So all of our principals and all of our staff could put forth any ideas that they had about how they wanted to spend budget money as well. And that number came in north of $1 million. So we've actually moderated that down to $400,000 and are trying to figure out how best to cull through those. And so our total identified expenditures for next year are $4.3 million. So when we think about revenue, what does that mean for us? Remember, we have three major forms of revenue, really two major forms of revenue. We do get some federal revenue based on entitlements, but that number traditionally has been less than $100,000 for us. So our big drivers for revenue are first the state, well, first you as our city council members, and then the state. And so what we've heard from the governor and from the governor's staff, and his budget will come out December 20th, is that it's going to be a tight budget year at the state level for a variety of reasons. It's also going to be a fight. And I think everybody can kind of see that shaping up. We have a Democratic Senate, Democratic House, and a Republican governor. I don't know where the budget's going to land. But there is some question about how much is going to come out of the state this year. And part of the reason it's going to be tight is this is a re-benchmarking year for the state, which means that they have to go back and look at all of the things that are in the standards of quality, re-benchmark based on current trends, and look at any modifications that need to be made based on those SOQs. You might know that there was a J-Lark study done, the Joint Legislative Committee that came together and put together a package of recommendations for change in Virginia public schools. And to do all of the things that are in that, there would be a significant cost to the state. But in that package included not just re-benchmarking, but also bringing teacher salaries up to the national average. We're below the national average across the Commonwealth of Virginia. We are not here in the City of Falls Church because of the work that we all have done together. But we are a little bit nervous about what's going to come from the state. So we do rely heavily on you. And this year, when we take all of those things that we've put together and think about what our current projected revenue or what our current projected expenditures are, we really believe that we would need a revenue transfer of about 8.6%. Now, the good news is, last year, when I stood in front of you, I said it was over 12%. So it is less than the number that I shared with you last year. We also know that this is a big number. And because it's a big number, we also know that there's going to be some negotiation that happens, and we're going to go back and forth. And I just want to double down on the fact that we're committed to the revenue-sharing agreement, just like I was last year. So we did, in the end, last year, live within the revenue-sharing agreement. I just have an obligation to share with you publicly as the superintendent of schools what, I have an obligation, actually constitutionally, to share with you what it would take for us to have a fully-funded school system to get everything that we need. So knowing that we likely aren't going to get everything we need, we're going to have to come back to the drawing board and have some conversations. But that's really in order for us to do what we need to do where we need to be. So that would include those six additional teachers and then the compensation for our staff that includes the step and the COLA and some of those hard and fast things that we can't get away from, like health insurance and contract costs and fuel and the like. So in summary, this is the good news, right? In summary, we continue to excel. We have the highest test scores in the state of Virginia. We're the number-one school division. We were voted the number-one place to work by the Washington Post last year. We've got a lot of celebrations in the City of Falls Church. And you know, you might not hear it from everybody, but don't forget the vast majority of people that are out there are really pleased with what we're doing. And it's borne out in the data, and we're excited about that. But investing in our people has been one of those areas that we have continually paid attention to. Our staff know that. They know that they're very well compensated. They also know that we are going to continue to maintain that compensation level as best we can to support recruitment and retention in our system. So we need to continue with that competitive compensation and pay attention to what's happening in surrounding jurisdictions. So we have a preliminary budget calendar. This is all in Granicus for our council member friends, but also this whole presentation is. And so our board has it in Board Docs. You can look at it. But we know that you all are looking at doing your budget adoption on May 13th. And we anticipate for the school board the very next night to come back and do the adoption as well. So that means a couple of things to us. One is that we need to stay in close contact and keep intact this really great partnership that we have. We don't want to get to May 13th, have you adopt your ordinance, and then have to come together to try to figure things out that would push the adoption of ours because we want to let contracts to those teachers as quickly as possible following the adoption of yours. And then lastly, I think that sends a really strong message of collaboration that we're working together so closely. So I appreciate your time. Do we want to do questions now? Or do you want us to do both and then kind of do questions and answers after? What's your pleasure, Mayor Tarter and Chair Downs? Do you have a preference?
I'd say both.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
So thank you, Peter. And I really do value our partnership very much. And Peter and I speak frequently. And whenever we do, you know, we sometimes have very hard conversations, but we always, I think, speak very straight with each other and represent our organizations to each other very directly. And I appreciate that partnership. Before we get started, my job really is to introduce Kieran, who's going to give the revenue forecast. We did get a note from Councilmember Dave Snyder, who did just want to acknowledge that he is overseas traveling with the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. And so he was sorry to miss this meeting, but he looks forward to reviewing all this material and working together on crafting next year's budget. And that's what this discussion is all about. The schools are traditionally a little bit ahead of general government in budgeting. And so our job tonight is to just lay out what our revenue forecasts are. But I do want to just speak to a couple of key strategic things that I know that we'll be working staff and council together to accomplish next year. The city council's strategic plan did envision the growth that is happening right now. And a lot of our planning has been so that we can manage that growth effectively and then carry on core government services effectively in a growing city. Some of the key strategic initiatives that the council has always focused on or has been, and I anticipate will continue to be, is to ensure that we do have a safe community, both in terms of monitoring this construction activity, that it is happening safely and will be built safely for generations to come. But also, our police are in conversation with Hoffman right now just when these new buildings open up right next to our high school, that we are, right from the beginning, in a good posture to make sure that this is a safe and welcoming community for everybody when it opens. Our streets, safety extending to our streets, that our streets are walkable and bikeable and safe for all users, that we are an equitable and affordable community. And we're doing a lot of innovative and interesting new programs with affordable housing in particular, which is very relevant to school staff and to general government staff as well. Our work to promote small-town character in a very vibrant and growing urban center. And that's everything from holiday lights to special events, but maintaining that people-first approach to government. And kind of that last big strategic value that the council has as we proceed is maintaining that customer service and that responsive government that people expect in the City of Falls Church. And to do all these things, we need really capable staff. And whether it's our Falls Church cable TV staff, Michael and his crew putting out great communications for the community, or Emily Basemore here, who's going to introduce our demographers, helping us plan out the future for the city, or Andy, who just wrapped up the work on the Community Energy Plan, and it now is helping the city deliver our capital improvements program. All this work really requires sophisticated talent in our workforce. And so looking out for our workforce, making sure that we're taking care of compensation as a basic need, but also have strong leadership for our workforce, that we're organizing our work well, that we have the right tools and equipment for our staff to be successful. And then, very importantly, that we fostering a very strong sense of belonging for our workforce here as well. And those are sort of some of the core principles that we're trying to do with our retention and recruitment efforts for our workforce. So with that introduction, Kieran, if you could wow us with the numbers. Kieran, I will note she has worked very hard on these revenue forecasts, brought in a lot of expertise from the treasurer, the commissioner of revenue, economic development, as well as looking at all the regional trends to try to give us as accurate a forecast as we can. It is a hard thing to do. We're, you know, we're many months away from the beginning of the fiscal year, and we won't really know until a solid two years from now how it all works out. But Kieran, thank you for your work on this.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just park myself here. So we have for you economic outlook, preliminary revenue projections, and budget cost drivers on the general government side, and then I'll wrap up with the next steps. On the national level, the economy is still quite strong. However, the economists and forecasters are seeing signs of slowdown of pace of growth past the post-pandemic that we saw in the last two years, the growth. And most forecasts are projecting some sort of a slowdown in the coming year. Inflation, as Dr. Noonan mentioned, in the Washington metropolitan area is down to 3.3% as of September 2023. The job market is still quite competitive with historically low unemployment rates. There is 1.5 job opening for every unemployed person nationally as of September 2023 versus 1.9 jobs per every unemployed person in February. So those are some of the indicators that economists are seeing. Food and other commodity prices are still high. And what I'm reading is that consumer spending is on a downward trend, and consumer debt is on the rise. And then we're also seeing impact of elevated mortgage interest rates on housing affordability and availability across the region. So factoring all that in and then seeing how uniquely this little city is positioned, our preliminary revenue forecasts for fiscal year 2025 are developed, as Mr. Shields said, in collaboration with the Treasurer's Office, the Commissioner of Revenue, Economic Development, to factor in and capture as much information that we can so far out before we actually go into the fiscal year. We do have, for regular growth, we have about three to four months of data into these projections for this fiscal year, starting from July. And then we have factored in 10 months of real estate information, the sale, housing sale information that we get from Arlington, and factored that in our real estate projections. The forecast is based on existing tax rate of $1.23 for every $100 in AV assessed value and vehicle tax at $4.80. We are projecting real estate growth of 5.9% in fiscal year 2025. This would be as of January 1, 2024 projections, assessment, sorry. And along with 12.7% in growth in all other tax, general fund tax revenues, we are expecting that the total general fund tax revenues to grow by 8%, which would yield an additional $7.5 million in new revenue for next fiscal year, and a third of which is projected to grow, is projected to come from new developments. That's $2.1 million. So here, that almost a third of the revenue, just wanting to share with everybody, that these projections factor in the new construction from residential as well as the two major commercial projects that are in the pipeline and are expected to come online in fiscal year 25. So different elements of both Broad Street and Washington and also West Falls. Projects are coming online starting in spring of 2024 and all the way to winter of 2024-25. There is the multifamily units in both the projects, grocery store, a hotel, and a medical building. And Founders Row 2 is not expected to factor in until, for occupancy, until the following year after. So taking a closer look at the preliminary real property values that we are assessing for next year, the real estate assessed values are projected to grow at 5.9%. I requested the screen, so I don't have to keep looking back. Are expected to grow at 5.9% overall with residential growth at 4.7%. That's average. And an additional 5% from commercial apartments and 1% in new construction, and that is mainly from residential and multifamily units, which is approximately $58 million for that 1%. Projections for our neighboring jurisdictions, Alexandria is projecting an overall growth of 2.4% and residential hovering between 2% to 4%. Fairfax County is projecting, at this point, an overall growth of 1.7% in their real property values and residential at 2.1%. Commercial is expected to realize a drop in new construction at half a percent there. So this chart shows that all elements of the fiscal year 2025 assessed value elements are below the five-year average that were done for the five years prior to 2025, except for the commercial assessed values, which are really whopping high over the average. And then the impact to the median residential taxpayer, average of last five years was $432. And then for fiscal year 2025, with the given projections, are estimated to be $540. This chart shows that the real estate assessed value, the last bar, is at, as of January 1, 2024, is projected to be $5.7 billion, and which is an average growth of, over the 12-year window, an average growth of about 3.5% year over year. That I say average, but if you see 2022, saw a much larger growth than compared to the gradual increase that was going on. The top two, the dark blue and the green, are commercial, which is broken down into multifamily units and the general commercial. And they comprise about a third of the total assessed value and of the total AV that we have in the city. So this slide shows that overall, the tax revenues in the general fund are expected to grow by 8%. And showing each category, real property, personal property, sales tax, meals tax, business license, and other taxes, which include the recreation and hotel, the two that I want to call out. And these are, again, strong and bold projections backed by the new developments that we are expecting to take on, go online for occupancy in the coming year. Slides 10 through 13 show details on the four different important key economic categories, sorry, that factor into our projections. And we have done that in the past to provide more transparency. And we have done that in the past to provide more transparency. And there is a lot of data in those slides and I will, you know, we'd welcome any questions that are there. There are two lines, the red and the blue, showing performance between the budget and the actuals and to see what some of the trends have been. And I won't go into much detail there. Cost drivers for the city include, are at a total of, at this point, the forecast is 4.8 million. Of that, 1.8 million is for compensation and, compensation and benefits. The state and local government wage growth index is, was at 4.8% in September 2023. So based on that, and then adding a 10% placeholder for benefits, we're projecting a need of an additional 1.8 million for compensation and benefits to support the new development operating costs would require $1 million to, and then a 3% increase in our inter-jurisdictional contracts, and then also internal contracts like utilities and fuel and others would mean $600,000 more. And in order to sustain fiscal year 2024 initiatives, we would need, because some of them are funded using one-time funds, would require building into the budget 1.4 million dollars. And those initiatives include the project management for a lot of CIP projects that we just put in the budget amendment that was approved in November. The city managers reorg and other council initiatives, including the holiday lights, the, the energy action plan implementation, and then Vietnamese community outreach. So those were all funded with one-time money. And that 4.8 does not include the increase in WAMADA subsidy that is, we are all hearing about. So the Washington metropolitan area transportation authority is projecting a gap of $750 million to their budget. And that's mainly due to inflation and collective bargaining agreements, a good portion of that coming from there. And then decrease in their ridership, because a lot of people are working from home now. And federal subsidy discontinuation of that, because a lot of jurisdictions were getting that. So they're looking at options on how to bridge that gap, various scenarios. And some of them include, mean raising the fare or looking at increasing the jurisdictional subsidies and, and also using the preventive maintenance transfers for operating purposes. And we hope to see their budget project, proposed on December 14. But as of now, we have the numbers amongst a couple of scenarios impacted the city of 1 million to 2 million dollars. And we'll know more in the coming weeks. So looking at overall with these preliminary revenue and expenditure projections, we are projecting a shortfall, a gap of 3.1 million at this point, which means 2.8% of the budget, expenditure budget. And that is including the schools, the general government, and the WAMADA needs. So in, in, aside from that, we are projecting 571,000 coming from real estate tax revenue from the West Falls project. And that is based on their assessment as of January 1, 2024. And that, that was excluded in the projections that I just talked about a few slides before. And this was modeled in the financing plan that was provided a few years ago for the high school. And that plan is fully funded and so kind of gives us some flexibility on how to use those funds. And at this point, leave it open for councils' consideration to possibly use those funds to meet additional needs that need to be addressed as part of the new developments or use that towards tax rate reduction or other strategic purposes for the. So the next slide is the budget calendar and just a couple of dates that I'd like to call out. Next Monday, we'll get budget guidance from council. And based on that, the schools will present their proposed budget, school superintendent on the first, second Tuesday of January, January 9th, CIP. The planning commission will be working in February and their recommendations would come out on February 21st. And there would be a bit of a gap. And then the city manager and the school superintendent would present their budget proposals to city council on April 1st. It is a couple of weeks later than we have done in the past, just to allow us for some time to see how other factors, WAMADA, the state legislation, and all the other things play out. And then in the month of April and early part of May, we have some public hearings and town halls and adoption anticipated on May 13th for a budget that goes into effect July 1st. And with that, I will stop here and pass it on to whoever wants the mic.
Thank you, Kieran.
I just, I was a little bit remiss and I apologize to my colleagues, Kristin Michael and to Michelle Kopick, who are both here tonight, who helped with the presentation as well. So I wanted to make sure people knew that. All right.
So we have the demographers here and we could go through that material and save questions to the very end? Or do we want to take a break from presentations and just see if there are questions at this point? Questions and discussion?
And that could be used for this upcoming fiscal year and what you were saying. I'm just trying to make this clear for anyone watching, that the city council could use that as, in terms of.
So I'll, I'll just jump in. And so that's the basic idea. We had originally modeled that money to pay for the city hall, the library, and, and the high school as part of the overall plan of finance, with the high school being sort of the, the main, the main lift. And we do have that financial plan fully covered. And so the revenues that come on here, you know, from, from the West Falls then are available for, you know, for any purposes that the city, that the city has. That's right. So in terms of the, the bottom line, the 7.5 million forecast does not include that 571,000.
Thank you, thank you. You might, sorry if this is a repeat. Under slide 14 on cost drivers for general government, that 1 million, what is the new development operating costs?
So that really is actually taking some of the fiscal impact modeling that we have for, for new construction and extrapolating that and then assigning some ratios to the, where they are in their delivery and assessing kind of what needs are going to come out of those. So we do know that we'll need, I believe, additional police officers, for instance, to help staff up to cover West Falls with, with the significant population growth on this part of the city. That's just an example, but there'll be many other examples.
When you say operating costs, you mean headcount plus any supporting contractors, like PS and.
Exactly. It's kind of all-inclusive. In our initial modeling. And, 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 you know, for us on the expenditure side, we're very early in the process. And so these are things that we can reasonably anticipate and are sending that signal.
I like that 27% jump on the meals tax. You want to talk through the, the, yeah. We eat our way through stuff, but seriously, though, can you talk me through kind of the underwriters, the drivers of that projection?
Yeah, sure. So last two years, we've seen like 28% one year and 25% growth. So part of it is recovery from COVID. But then we are also, the first quarter that we saw this year, year over year, was again, solid double digits. So we've done, like this quarter, this Q1 that we saw, year over year, was not 20%, but it was in the 10s. And so we factored in 10% regular growth and then growth from developments that we are, so that is why we're seeing a.
Which category, per component breakdown that we had a particular time on, is, is really, is.
Yeah, we can provide you the breakdown, the construction and, and also retail activity and then retail.
Thank you very much. Karen, the chart that says the median residential tax, $432 average over the last five years, 540 projecting to FY '25. What would the number, what would the tax rate be if the median residential tax held at somewhere around the $400 level that it's been at for the last five years as opposed to going up to 540? That's question number one. And I guess what would the equalized tax rate be? The rate that it would, that would generate the same amount of revenue as was generated in the last year's budget?
So the equalized tax rate is $1.17, 1.174. And I will need to do the math on the average, because average really is, sees a lot of peaks in the last two years. So to me, I mean, I look at the average, it doesn't speak to me as much as, as what, you know, the, the year-over-year activity. I mean, average is great when it comes to like sales tax, meals tax. But when it comes to assessed value, it's, it's a number, but it's, it's not like a concrete number. I mean, it's good to look at, but projections don't happen on average when it comes to real estate assessments. So, so but for, from, to keep it. That's 5.
About enrollment, I'm just for historical kicks. I think I've seen one of your charts that shows that in 1985-ish, the year that I moved into town, the enrollment of the school system, total enrollment was somewhere around 1,000. Is that, is that roughly right? I've told people that, is that? Okay, so over the course of the years that I've lived here, we've grown from, you know, 1,000-ish, which is barely sustainable, I recall the rhetoric back in those days, to 2,700. And your number pre-COVID, you, you basically have gotten to the point now where we've caught back up to where you were pre-COVID. Our enrollment is still slightly below where it was right before COVID. Is that right? Okay, thanks.
So, so just for further context, Steve, for everyone here, you might recall during COVID, we, we cut in excess of 10 positions to moderate the, the staffing ratios based on the students that we, we had enrolled. So now that we're back up to where we were pre-COVID, we need to bring those teachers back as part of our budget. So we did, we did cut accordingly. I'd be interested, I just, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask a question or not, but I wonder what the five-year average would be if you took the four years prior and added that to it, how close that would be to the 4.32? So, so. Include the projection in the new, in a new five-year average. Be interesting.
One other, just for people's own shorthand, every penny on the tax rate is 1/10,000 of the value of your home. So if you live in a million-dollar house, a penny on the tax rate is worth $100. If you're a $900,000 home, which is pretty close to what the average is now, it's, every penny on the tax rate is, is $90. And so one penny tax rate gets you fairly close to that, to that average.
Thank you. I wanted to go back actually to our student enrollment, especially our special populations. So the jump in particular, the 37% jump in economic disadvantage. Do we have any more data on those students? Are they families that are new to Falls Church? Are they current residents where the family's situation is worsening? Because I think this feels like a good area of collaboration between general government and schools to dig in.
A good question. We would need to sort of go back and do a dive on that and we can take that back as a question, for sure. Asking city staff, okay.
Another question. Now, I know that with the infusion of ARPA dollars, both general government and schools had a bunch of one-time positions using ARPA dollars. Are the preliminary budgets inclusive of funding those or what are we doing with those positions?
So I'll, I'll speak to the schools. The schools are showing, so ARPA runs out in December of next year. So we show those positions continuing through the end of the year for those that are going to go away. There are two or three positions that we'd like to continue funding that we've built into our budget that were ARPA-related.
Yeah, there are three positions on the general government side that are ARPA-related. And we are working through strategies where they could be fully funded in the coming fiscal year with ARPA dollars. So we're just kind of working through the, some mechanics on how we can do that. Otherwise, if we're, if we're not successful in that, then we would build that into the requested budget for next year.
Thank you. Last question for me. On local revenues, Karen, so I think clearly the power of living locals paying off here in Falls Church. So I think similar to Caroline's question about meals tax, obviously 27% is quite high. Sales, when I benchmark sales forecasts in Alexandria and Fairfax, ours is at 6%. Fairfax is estimating 1% sales tax growth and Alexandria is 3.8%. And so while I think restaurants are doing really well here and obviously our real estate and the new construction is also doing really well, why are we so bullish on sales tax here?
So again, it's backed with the new developments that are coming. We are projecting somewhere between 2.5 and 3% for regular growth. And then factoring in, you know, more people coming in as part of those developments. So more retail, more selling, buying, so factoring that. And we look, getting that from the fiscal impact models then.
Can you hear him? Can you hear him coming through? Yeah, you can hear him through the, we just need to hear it through the TV. So.
Charts later, but just qualitatively, how do these look for you? What's your read on these? That's my first question.
These are all much larger growth numbers than is the historic pattern.
Any context to that? Is just, it's a game every year or?
No, I mean, so, you know, we were talking about sales taxes. We have a major new grocery store that's going to come online in the fall. And so that's, that's a, when we talked about sort of going into the details of the revenue forecast, we really tried to sit down with what we think is going to come online and when. So we take that grocery store projection and then we run some factors on it. They're going to take some customers away from existing grocery stores. It could open late, you know, we have some sort of hedge factors in there, but we also didn't want to just ignore it because we know it's, it's happening. So that's kind of where we land on a number like that. Each one of these kind of goes through its, its whole analysis of, of sort of risk analysis. But each one of these is a larger number than what you would normally see. And so this is just one of the most dynamic. of the most dynamic years for revenue forecasting that we've, you know, that we've had maybe ever.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. And then the second question is just on slide seven. The, the clarification, just for the public and also possibly for, for, for me, using the public is my excuse. The 540, that is just simply based on the increase in value of all the properties. That's not necessarily an increase in our tax rate, correct? And...
Yeah, this, this is strictly the current projection for residential owner-occupied housing in the city with no change to rates.
And so the rates overall, historically, how has that been? Is our rates have changed little over the years or how has it, how has it been in Falls Church City and is compared to our localities? Like what's our rate over the last 10 years or so?
So the rate has been reduced by 12.5 cents over the past three years. And, and that's was largely because assessed value climbed very sharply. And so even in those years where we were reducing the tax rate, there still was an increase for most homeowners in the city because the AV was growing at, at such a clip.
Okay. And then that's, that's been pretty consistent then over the last 10 years or so?
I think, so what, what Karen had noted earlier, that, you know, if you take a longer-term look, it's about 3.5% growth year over year if you take like a 12-year timeframe. And so that's maybe kind of what you would see as your average growth and what the tax bill would be.
Okay. All right, thanks.
That's right.
I can't hear, sorry, what's that?
So the tax rate has gone up and has gone down. In 2007, we had a tax rate that was in the dollar, I think we were down to a dollar one. And so two kind of big things happened. One, the, the water system, we used to take a pretty significant profit from the water system and that was worth several, many pennies on the tax rate. And that happened at the exact same time that the Great Recession happened. And so that was an era where the tax rate increased rather quickly.
Okay. And is, and last question, I know Bethany has one. Is that, does our tax rate, is it correlated with the increases of, with our neighboring districts? How does that look? Do you know just offhand?
I think that all the jurisdictions kind of look at each other and sort of see what's happening regionally. Usually AV is, is, tracks pretty closely from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. We have some unique factors relating to the construction activity that's happening in the city and those are reflected in these numbers. We have a chart that we usually present and just comparing tax rates across the region. Generally, what you see is that the larger jurisdictions have lower tax rates, but the smaller jurisdictions have higher tax rates. And so we're kind of in the middle pack of the, of the Viennas, the Herdons, the Manassas, Leesburg and sort of, you know, those smaller jurisdictions.
I know, I think the mic just turned on. Okay. And I know that, that in order to, to keep our credit rating and everything with the bond, there was some hesitancy to necessarily dip in, or there was a need to carry over a more significant amount, I think, than maybe otherwise we would be because of worrying case of the economy crashed and we wouldn't be able to, to make good on the bond. Again, excuse my terminology if that's not correct for financing purposes. Where are we in this process? And wondering if there, if the interest in going more into the carryover funds would be something that we would be looking at sometime down the future and how long down the future would that be?
So it's a really important question. So the city has very healthy capital reserves right now and, and we did build those up consciously to help mitigate the risk of financing the capital improvements that we were undertaking. So we've, so we're, we ended the last fiscal year with capital reserves of about 13 million. And we have sold, received the proceeds from the sale of the Converge LLC site where the Virginia Tech Center is, and that's an $8 million payment that the city's received. So we anticipate that we'll end this fiscal year with capital reserves of about 22 million. So that's one-time money. And so we would deploy those for one-time expenditures on the capital side. We would, you know, the city's adopted fiscal policies would prescribe against using that money to cover operating budgets. And the reason is when that money's gone, then you have a fiscal cliff. And, and so we, that's sort of the basis behind those policies, which we've adhered to faithfully for many years.
Is that 13 considered one-time funds or is that 13 considered continuing annual revenue?
So those are all sort of like money in the savings account, so it's all one-time money?
Thank you.
Anything that goes through the capital improvements program is, is eligible. Yeah, one, one-time expenditures are, are, you know, what those dollars are for. Yep. That's right. So generally, these projects take about three years to stabilize and, and they can take five years to stabilize. And so what that means is they're fully leased out and we're getting kind of, everything is happening in the building. We're getting all of the tax receipts from the retailers and the restaurants as well as the property taxes. And so in the early years, when it's just a hole in the ground, it still does get assessed. And if they've done, you know, $20 million worth of excavation and concrete pouring, that shows up in their tax bill. And then in years after that, it's sort of, it grows from there. But about five years is actually probably for these big buildings, that's sort of the ramp up on, on the, for revenues to come online. So that's a, that's a good question. Probably a conservative way of looking at it would be, we'd be ramping up with, with the growth over the next, it would stabilize at three years. It could, it could take five years for it to all come online. Maybe three to five. I don't know, like, you know, what that rate of growth is going to be. Depends on a lot of factors, but I think we can anticipate that there will be new revenues from that for, for three to five years.
I'll just add from the, I'll just add from the school side. One of the things that you, we're starting to see in some of these data that we're looking at in terms of our projections, when these sites stabilize, our student populations begin to stabilize too. Because those units are rented or sold or whatever and, and then there is no more room for folks to move in. So we, we anticipate probably not needing to look at any capital projects in the system until probably 2040, 2035 to 2040. And at that time, we might need to do some look at our overall facilities, but we've done an analysis of all of our facilities from a stabilized perspective with respect to growth. And I think we're good until probably 2040. I've got it, yeah. All right, you guys want to move on? All right. We'll bring up the Stephen Fuller Institute. Thank you, guys.
So Emily, would you like to make introductions? Okay. So Emily Basemore is our lead planner who's been working with the schools and the general government on this update to our comprehensive plan on demographics. Ms. Basemore?
Thank you. Good evening, City Council and School Board members. My name is Emily Basemore. I am a senior planner with the city. And like Wyatt said, I've been working alongside a team of city staff and folks from the school system as well on this demographic study, also alongside SFI. So tonight, School Board and City Council is requested to receive a presentation from the Stephen Fuller Institute detailing the findings of the City of Falls Church's demographic study. The presentation will highlight data from the regional trends report as well as the demographic projections. The trends report and projections will inform a scheduled update of the demographics chapter of the comprehensive plan. This item was previously before council on October 2nd, 2023 for a work session where you guys reviewed the scope of work. The city, or the chapter update is expected to occur in early 2024. No formal action is requested at this time. And I'm going to give a brief introduction to SFI. So the Stephen Fuller Institute was selected in July 2023 to lead the demographic study. The institute was founded by a longtime regional economist, Stephen S. Fuller, and is part of the Char School of Policy and Government at George Mason University. Dr. Keith Waters, Assistant Director of SFI, serves as the principal investigator as well as the operational lead in data gathering, data analysis, and preparing project deliverables. Dr. Terry Clower, Director of the Center for Regional Analysis and SFI, serves as co-principal investigator and project lead for, for the study and will coordinate team efforts or has been coordinating team efforts. So tonight, again, the study deliverables that we're looking at is the regional trends report and also those demographic projections. I also want to hop over to the last page of the staff report to just look at timing really quick. So again, we had our consultant selection back in July of 2023. The City Council had a kickoff to look at the scope of work. In early October, the School Board also had a presentation of the school projections in November, specifically November 14th. And now we're back with City Council and the School Board looking at the trends report, looking at the projections. We also go to the Planning Commission and Housing Commission this week on Wednesday. And again, that comprehensive plan chapter update is scheduled for January 2024. And I'm just going to hand it over to SFI for their presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you. I'm going to start out with two comments. The first is that any hard questions are going to go to Terry since he is the director. And he also has generously offered to fund Womata's budget gap, so that's not public...
As much as they deserve.
Right. That's, that's not widely known, so I'm just letting people know. On a more serious note, I do want to say how great city staff have been. Emily, Paul, and I also particularly would like to, to direct praise towards Kristin Michael. She is absolutely fantastic. So the budget forecast should also include bigger bonuses for them. So with that, we will jump into the demographic report and then we'll look at some forecasts at the end. As an agenda, we'll go over the Washington economy very briefly just to situate ourselves. We are a part of the Washington economy here in Falls Church, which will become apparent later on. And then we'll dive into the Falls Church regional trends. We'll look at people, housing, and then jobs, and then discuss projections at the end. Gross domestic product. I, I'm going to sit on this for just a second because it is one of our biggest, one of our biggest points that we need to make continuously is, and I know some of you have heard this actually from me, the DC metropolitan area is not doing as good as we think we are. And it's been 10 years of underperformance. From 2001 to 2006, we outpaced the nation. Our average growth was 4.2%. The US grew at 2.6%. We grew a little faster, one percentage point faster from 06 to 011, from, yeah, from 011, I guess. But a lot of that actually was due to the fact that from 2008 to 2009, we basically just didn't do as bad as the rest of the US. Okay? But from then on, so starting in 2011 and basically after, we've been growing slower than the US as a whole. And this is, you know, if you can think back that far, this was kicked off by Budget Control Act and Sequester. We've been underperforming for 10 years. This isn't who we think we are, but nonetheless, this is who we are. We have been growing slower as a region and it's due to a couple of things. Uncle Sam's buying less, right, from the people here in the DC metro and also very high housing costs. It shows up in jobs in three primary ways. This is direct federal employment. That's basically been stagnant since the Budget Control Act. You see blips around the decennial census when people send out all these, all these takers, you know, like counters and all this type of stuff. We saw a little bit extra after the pandemic, but all of that has worn off. So federal government isn't coming to save our day. And this is the big one. It's actually professional and business services. This is actually what we do. This is our bread and butter. These are contractors working, doing the federal government's work, but nonetheless, this is what the DC metropolitan economy is founded on. And what we see is actually after the Budget Control Act and Sequester, we had a mini recession and things were bumbling along. We were going at, we'll call it 15,000 jobs month over year. Pandemic hit and we lost, you know, upwards of 33,000 jobs. Most of the, actually not most of that, that was entirely in, within the subsector of administrative support and waste management. So these are people keeping the buildings up and running. Professional, scientific, technical, people making 100, 150, $200,000 a year. They just went home and worked on Zoom. They didn't get laid off necessarily. They just went and worked. So all of these people were the people cleaning the buildings and sitting at front desks and this type of stuff. We had a good little run after the pandemic. Things got, things started growing more quickly. That has come to an end as interest rates increased and pandemic and the government's starting to pull back on spending a little bit. Professional and business service growth in the DC economy has stalled. This last bit in September, very likely a, sort of a statistical anomaly. We will wait to see and if that gets revised away in the future. But the big takeaway is the region's economy has really, really stalled out. Northern Virginia is doing somewhat better, particularly as compared to DC and suburban Maryland. We got back here in Northern Virginia up to pre-pandemic levels in mid-2022. The DC MSAs a whole just got back, right? So Northern Virginia is outpacing, but the chart that I just showed you on the professional and business service sector, this actually shows up in Northern Virginia as well as DC and Maryland. So this is actually, this is region-wide. Okay, so with that doom and gloom, this is kind of, this is, this is sort of the island we all sit in. Let's talk about Falls Church. We're going to start with people. Falls Church growing along reasonably, you know, just kind of reasonably well over the past, over the past decade, just sort of slowly and surely. And when things come online, when these big buildings come online, you get population bumps. The nuance to this unfortunately is we have been seeing net domestic out-migration since 20, since 2013 regionally. We had net domestic in-migration. This also does show up in Falls Church. Falls Church is a lot more bouncy. Obviously, it's a much smaller community. So when they're sampling this type of stuff, the statistics kind of bounce around quite a bit. But nonetheless, we basically see the same trends in Falls Church that we see in Northern Virginia and DC as a whole. Out-migration started to, domestic out-migration started here in 2020 and 2021. The wheels fell off. Regionally, we lost 66,000 people year over year. Okay, so this was people leaving the area. It is a bit of a doom and gloom story and something that I do tend to want to sit with because it, it does concern us and, and we do need to do more regarding building. Regarding building in Falls Church, Falls Church is what the council of governments, most of Falls Church is essentially what the council of governments calls a, an activity center. So Falls Church, in the activity center of Falls Church, grew 13% between 2015 and 2020. So it's, it is growing, but this was 40, this was 43rd out of 140 activity centers in the DC metro area. And so kind of the way that I would think about it, Falls Church is growing. The buildings are, you know, particularly standing here. They're, they're literally just right there. So they're very forward in your mind. But we're kind of, in Falls Church, it's kind of, I would say, it's more of like, it's, it's kind of on like, it's in the upper echelon of like the middle, right? So there are quite a few other places within the DC metropolitan area that are putting in more building and making more, more space for, for folks to live. So Falls Church is growing along, but there are a lot of other places that are growing at an even faster rate. It's actually, it's, it's, it's TAD zones. They're TAD zones, traffic analysis zones. So the COG lists like... So the COG lists like, they basically round up a bunch of traffic analysis zones, which is a very fine-grained.
These are concentrations. It's, it's places that attract a lot of traffic. And so that can be a retail center, it can be a hospital, it can be a church. But it's a density measure of traffic and they, and they break these up. And so I think you have six, I think it is, TAD zones within Falls Church, you know, and of course you go Falls, Tyson, of course, the Fairfax has quite a number. I don't know, probably 30 or 40, something like that. So that's where they get these activity centers. It's a measure that the COG is using a lot for the design purposes of say, it's more thinking about smart growth and some of these concepts that you're hearing about. It's not clear to us exactly how you do it, particularly at a jurisdictional level, what difference it makes other than within your overall planning. Because what you guys do in your planning, kind of think about things as, as, you know, everybody wants to talk about, and we'll talk a little bit more in just a minute, about kind of live, work, play, right? But that's how we think about some of these activity centers. Where do you just have a concentration?
So back on the population change, this is, Falls Church, because it is such a small jurisdiction, tends to get lost in the number. But if you look at the surrounding jurisdictions, Fairfax County, Montgomery, Prince George's, the gray bars here, that's going to be net domestic outmigration when it's on the left side. So the large core jurisdictions, right? This is, this is kind of the people that we identify with or the jurisdictions that we identify with, net domestic outmigration between, I think this, yeah, 2021 and 2022. Okay? So we are seeing net, these are people leaving the region. And I'm just going to draw your attention, domestic migration, not necessarily because they're better than anybody, but because they're going to understand relative economic opportunities, right? They're voting with their feet. These are people who don't find Fairfax County, Montgomery County desirable places to live, and so they, they move out elsewhere. And where are they moving to? They're moving to ex-urban areas, Frederick, Fredericksburg, ex-urban Maryland, ex-urban Maryland, and as well as ex-urban Virginia, right? So these are people moving to the fringe of the city, looking for more space. Demographically, Falls Church hasn't changed dramatically. So these are going to be five-year samples from the American Community Survey from the Census Bureau. It hasn't changed dramatically regarding age distribution or racial composition between the five-year samples of 2012 to 16 and then 17 to 21. The biggest change actually has been in the wealth. It's actually gotten notably wealthier. So in, in the five-year period from 12 to 16, 32% of households in, in Falls Church made more than $200,000. In the five-year period between 17 and 21, this went up to 35%. This is actually double the rate of the DC MSAs as a whole, so this isn't necessarily reflecting inflation. And inflation would only pick up kind of that last year for the most part anyway. Okay. So on the ACS, continuing with the ACS, the big change in household composition is actually families with kids. So the number, the share of households with, that were, were families with kids increased from 31% to 36%. And this primarily came at the expense of single-age working households, right? So this would be people moving into, you know, households that previously had been single age. I say ACS five-year sample because this is going to pick up three years of pre-pandemic trends, okay? And so a lot has changed, obviously, since the pandemic. I think I heard this referred to as the most dynamic time regarding forecasting in the City of Falls Church. So we feel that certainly watching the data swing all over the place. And we'll. I don't remember what the asterisk is, so I'll have to get back to you. I think it's in, I think it should be in the, in the trends report that you have. So on housing, you guys are obviously building and you guys have been for quite some time. Housing just over the past 10 years has ticked up from about 5,400 up to 6,500 in 2022. These are data coming from the US Census Bureau's Population Estimates Program. If we look at population estimates over housing units, what we see is population per housing unit was at about 2.4%. Ticked up a little bit, kind of dropped to 2.6, increased a bit back to 2.4% and then down to 2.25 or 2.24%. I bring this up because when we look even just over the last 10 years, it stayed relatively within a band of about 2 and 1/4 to 2.4, right? So these things vary over time, just, just like anything varies over time, but it stayed in a relatively narrow band. If we break, so if we look at generation rates, so this would be people per housing units, these are, this is probably the thing that is going to get the most interest. We can look at household size by, by apartment type, but the thing that I want to draw your attention to is actually going to be this enrollment generation rates for apartment and condos. It stays relatively stable for single-family dwellings, relatively stable for townhomes, but for apartment and condos, the generation rates that, that we estimated were going to be .27 in 2018, .26 in 2019, and then they fell during the pandemic to .21, .18, and .19. This is going to be different than some of the generation rates that maybe you have seen before because this is a blended generation rate. So this is going to include older buildings, buildings that, that had more units per, more bedrooms per unit, newer mixed-use apartment complexes, this is kind of like, you know, the ones that are going up right now. These have a much lower generation rate, school enrollment generation rate that ranges somewhere between .08 to .15. The second number down here at the bottom, some of you may have seen this presentation, and I know we mentioned it earlier, in the, in the chart that you saw, what you'll notice is that pre-COVID generation rates were quite a bit higher, right? And not a massive amount of stuff came online. I mean, we did have in 2021, what was it, Founder's Row One came online, and, and school enrollment fell, okay? So generation rate, the number of kids that were coming out of the total number of households actually declined. And so the two lines that you saw previously, one of them takes pre-COVID generation rates and the other one is going to take, you know, essentially today's generation rates. If they go back to pre-COVID generation rates, school enrollment is going to increase much faster. Housing writ large in Falls Church is very desirable and there's really not much of it to buy. Apart from what is going up, this is closed, this is active listings. This is what goes on the multiple listing service. Active listings fell from a blistering height of 45 units at the end of the month. This includes single-family dwelling, condos, and townhomes. I'm making, you know, 42 is quite a, when we talk about this number with, you know, NVAR, it's, I think it's 1,000 or whatever it is. I mean, it's quite, it's quite high, but nonetheless, the, the basic trend tracks. Basically, since 2015, the number of month-end units that are available to buy in Falls Church has fallen to, you know, essentially 12. So this is this green line. The gold line is going to be the number of closed sales. So this is the number of, you know, every time they close a sale, a real estate agent gets some commission. This has stayed relatively flat. So if closed sales is staying flat while the number of months end, so it's the last day of the month, has been coming down, what we see is days on market is, it's essentially zero. I mean, as soon as somebody thinks about putting a for-sale sign out on a single-family house in Falls Church, you have like five people knocking at the door, right? I mean, it is zero. Condo units, which are typically, you know, typically the less desirable property, the current median days on market is six, right? So things are selling in Falls Church very, very fast. People really would like to live here and demand outstrips supply. And where do we see this most sort of relevantly? Well, this is going to be in, this is going to be in prices. So this is the median price of sold homes and Falls Church is the blue line. The dotted blue line is actually, is actually the median. And then this is going to be your 12-month moving average, even, even kind of with a median, which tends to be a more robust statistic. When you have such few sales, it's even, it's, it bounces around quite a bit just because there's not that much activity here. Okay. This chart, it's kind of hard to see, but people pay, well, it's easy to see that people pay a premium for Falls Church. The blue line is a lot higher than the rest of Northern Virginia. The thing that I would like to draw your attention to is basically right before the pandemic, the gap between Falls Church and Northern Virginia was about 77%. People were paying a 70% premium about to live in Falls Church. That's fallen to about 44%. So that gap is starting to narrow and has been over the course of the pandemic. It was relatively stable up until the pandemic, but that gap has since, has since narrowed quite a bit. But nonetheless, people are still paying the premium to live in Falls Church. Demand is continuing to outstrip supply. One of the reasons that it is very likely that that gap has narrowed is because people need and want more space to live in. And so what this chart shows is the, is the average income of people by, if they moved or stayed, year over year. The only number on this whole chart that matters is this 42%, right? And so this is this, this green line, the average income of a household that moved in, from 2018 to 2019 that left Falls Church. The average, the average income for a household that left Falls Church, maybe it's person, I'm sorry, it's, it's person, it's individual. The average income of somebody who left Falls Church between 2018 and 2019 was $72,000. The average income of somebody who left Falls Church between 2019 and 2020 was $102,000. That's a 40% jump. Okay? So this was wealthier people who could afford to leave the city and, you know, Zoom from, you know, Zoom from home. And so this was, this is, it's, it's a, you know, it's a higher income crowd who left at the, at the outset of the pandemic. One data point, as you all well know, does not make a trend. These data are some of the most delayed data that, that we look at. So we will get later, you know, we'll get 2022 data later or 2021 data later. But, but nonetheless, this is a, it's a pretty sort of jarring statistic in some ways. Okay. A couple, just a couple of jobs, slides on jobs, and then we'll go into projections and then open up for questions. The first slide is commuting patterns. So for the most part, people either live in Falls Church and, and might, you know, basically commute out of Falls Church for a job, or they live outside of Falls Church and commute in for their job. So this is 2021. In 2021, 9,400 people lived outside of Falls Church, commuted in to work in the City of Falls Church. 5,700 people who lived in Falls Church commuted out to go work jobs elsewhere. I mean, you can think of Tysons, DC, right? And then only 466 people lived and worked in the City of Falls Church. These have relatively different demographics or different characteristics. Regarding worker age, they're relatively the same between workers arriving and workers leaving, but the people who live and work in Falls Church tended to be a good chunk older, 38% were 55-plus, where it was only 25% in the other categories, plus or minus. The big difference is the, is the salaries of people who commute in and the people who commute out. The people who are commuting in, only 55% of them made more than $40,000 a year. So most of the people who are commuting into Falls Church are, actually 45% of the people commuting into Falls Church make less than $40,000 a year. People who live in Falls Church and work outside, and work outside of Falls Church, 76% of them are making $40,000 more a year. So the people who are leaving are much more different, are obviously much different than the people who are coming in. Okay. And finally, with the Falls Church projections, we did it a number of ways. This is our preferred projection. So working with the planning department and city staff, we're estimating new housing. So this is data from Falls Church. Then we estimate the number of new households. Not, not all households are going to be filled, you know, it takes a little time to lease things up. And then even then, you know, you heard the term stabilization, you know, it's like 14, you know, basically 14% occupancy plus or minus in apartments, people moving out and they need to find people to move in. Then we estimate population change based on household sizes as well as school enrollment, which I worked closely with Kristin on this, who has absolutely fantastic enrollment data that most people don't have, so you are very lucky to have her. And then similar, similar estimating of, of, of jobs. You have the projections in front of you. The thing that I will say is that for the most part, you guys are at the pace that you're going, if you're, if you continue this pace, you will, you will grow from 5,800 a couple of years ago, I pulled out 23, I don't know why, to 9,700 in 2050, okay? And then when you look at particularly enrollment, which I, which I am aware is, you know, very, very of interest, given how great your guys' schools are, growing from about 2,500 just a year ago, I think it's 2,634 fall of this year, to, out to 2050 to about 3,200. This isn't wildly different from the Weld and Cooper estimates, who provide projections that are, tend to just be more trend line. The big difference is going to be when that growth occurs. Falls Church, for the most part, the school enrollment that we have projected is more, is a little more front-loaded because you guys are putting up so much right now. Yeah. And the last thing that I will say is that the 2018-19 average, so when you use those pre-COVID generation rates, obviously that's going to bump that up a little bit. So if people stop getting homeschooled or maybe sending their kids to private school or if you have people move back in with kids, it makes Kristin's job more difficult trying to find fantastic teachers. So with that, I'll let maybe Terry say anything that I missed and then we can open up for questions.
Can I make a comment very quickly?
Yeah.
Just a, just a quick comment to say, it's really fascinating to think about the enrollment at the BOSS compared to the enrollment one line above, particularly because over the weekend, as I was walking through the City of Falls Church, I met a parent who's taking their kid out of the Washington school and moving here and, and put their kid in eighth grade today. And then we have another student who just withdrew from St. James, who's coming to Falls Church too. So we're seeing kids in that sort of, you know, it's, it's a small sample, obviously, but two kids for us is a lot, especially mid-year. But we're starting to see some of those kids leaving private school and the homeschool and kind of moving back this direction.
I think the one thing that I would add though is, is look, the numbers, anytime you start forecasting out, you know, we, we didn't know what COVID was. We didn't have any idea of that at, so things can turn out a little different. But one of the things that, that really struck me when I did the presentation for the school board and listening to Dr. Noonan speak to them is that notion, and he shared it just a little earlier tonight, that unless just something really weird happens, you guys are pretty well set in terms of physical structures for dealing with growth and population well into the future, farther than we can reasonably project out with great accuracy. And so that puts you in a much better situation. I do a lot of work still, and you can tell from the accent, from Texas, and I can tell you that those folks are just killing themselves trying to figure out how to afford to, to put up new school buildings when, you know, a high school down there, construction cost are less, but it's still a couple of hundred million dollars before you build the football stadium. And, you know, and just looking at how you're going to finance that with municipal bond rates at the rates we're seeing today. You guys are in a very fortunate position. Now, I want to go back though to something that, that Keith said at the first, and it's something we're just, we're just hammering on. The reason we are not growing as rapidly in this region as we think, I mean, we look around, we think we're good, and of course, then when we talk to ourselves, we look in the mirror and we say, you're good-looking and good, right? I mean, we just think, the fact is, we have a whole lot of folks in this region who are professional age folks that can't afford to live here anymore and are choosing to move elsewhere. And our job growth is not a matter that companies don't want to be here, but they are struggling to find the workers. Last year, you know, last spring, we were still running about 180,000 open jobs in this region. Now, the, the, the job market has cooled substantially. There's only about 110,000 jobs now open. But the point that I'm making is that we have to work together as communities to address the issue of workforce housing affordability as well as all the other elements of affordable housing if we want to make it to where our young generation of workers can actually afford to raise a family here. Because the thing is, a lot of our competitor regions, Atlanta, Charlotte, Nashville, Dallas, those areas, you can move there tomorrow and on average be paying anywhere from 40% to 45% cost of living less. So we have to work together, dresses, and it's a little different, but overall though, you guys are a little bit in the, you're, you're in the sweet middle right now. You don't have the problems about huge office vacancy rates that I'd, I'd hate to be working this, this financial projection for Arlington right now. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
This is so this is this is primarily based on sort of the recent pace of growth. And I will say it does it does, I mean, I don't, you know, it does always kind of feel like that, that you're running out of space and this type of stuff. But I know Gordon, like the Gordon Triangle, I kept calling it Golden Triangle for a minute, so if I if I botch that again, that's quite a big site, you know, that's that alone is quite a big site of a lot of space, you know? So there are properties that are kind of just like laying around. We did we did a a presentation recently with, you know, John Peterson, who, you know, it's Peterson Company, he's a big developer in the region, he calls it lazy land. You guys are, you know, he was referring to schools, you guys are utilizing your school land quite quite nicely. But there's actually quite, there's more land out there than you kind of think, and when you look at it from, you know, sort of in a GIS, or if you look at it from an aerial view, you start finding parcels and putting them together. And developers, you know, in the in the name of making money and space for people to live, are quite quite creative with putting parcels together. So it does feel like running out of space, but this is in in discussions that we've had with with Paul, the pace doesn't, it certainly wouldn't run out of land by twenty fifty for this for this number of people. The buildings weigh more dense, yeah, they'd be easier, you know, they'd be more visible from from the road, but certainly wouldn't run out of space by any stretch of the imagination.
One thing that we did not explicitly put in, of course, are the changing policies that we're seeing. We're growing up as a region, we're becoming a much more dense region, and we likely so from the issue of the missing middle initiatives and others, and nobody's projecting that those are going to solve all, you know, solve all of our problems. But that, our emerging thinking on accessory dwelling units and the use of those, particularly as it relates to elder care and things like that, so there there are other things that are going to shift the density. But I want to make clear that we're basing this on what we were seeing of potentially developable land identified by county staff in here. So we have not talked about explicit change of policies that might change some of that existing density within existing neighborhoods.
The one that we did incorporate was the T the T-zone, the recent T-zone, but we didn't incorporate anything like what Alexandria did, which was, you know, get rid of single-family zoning, so that would be very, that would make it even more difficult to model any of this. Yeah.
Thank you.
So all all of this uses the blended rate. This is forecasting individual buildings, you know, they bounce around, they go up and down. And I think a pretty notable example right now is the Pearson, the Pearson Building, which I think had eighty-seven students right now, but this was down from a high of a hundred and twenty-nine. Okay, and so when you think about the variation within building and then across buildings, it makes it very difficult for us to, you know, what is the building composition, especially further out, you know, what are how many units are going to be in it? So so for this reason, we use the top, there was a lot of back and forth, and we just ended up using the top-line number.
Got it. I also read your narrative on your forecast, which was really informative. On single-family homes, obviously, we are pretty built out being an entering entering jurisdiction, so we don't have that many new net single-family homes. But the turnover, which I think Peter talked about at the beginning, is really where we see new people generation, so going from an empty nester to the new five- or six-bedroom home, which is the new norm, that often generates two to three pupils per household. How do you all account for that kind of turnover in neighborhoods?
We've so we have accounted for a little bit of net new, but for the most part, we have just kept the generation rate the same on that. Especially so so for a couple of reasons. We've kept the generation rate flat, moving out. I showed you earlier that the the people per housing unit kind of goes up and down. In the next, there's a lot of different narratives that we can tell to try to figure out which way the generation rate is going to go. So for example, interest rates are going up. It's making it more difficult for people, particularly my age, I'm fortunate that I actually own a home, to buy a home, and so a lot of people are starting to move back in with their parents, so you could see household sizes go back up for that reason, but then you could also see them come down because people just leave the area, which is actually what we've been seeing. So for single-family homes, we've actually been, we just kept the generation rate at the same rate moving forward. We did include some net new, some net new homes, because people split really big parcels that just happen to be around. But for the most part, single-family is adding some moving forward. But and and I understand that there is particularly, you know, there is action there. Moving forward, the big action is going to be in the multifamily. And we do see quite big swings in the multifamily when you dig into the data.
Interesting thing to keep in mind, and one that we didn't try to explicitly model, the kind of model we do on this, we're we're doing projections based on available properties, available land and all that. We also looked at and wound up not actually reporting on some other statistical methods that in no time did we try to say, hey, here are all the things that could possibly shape this in Lex forecast, thirty different data points to forecast another data point, right? Just adding error on top of error. But one of the things that we have noticed that I think is worth really watching is the overall fertility rates that we are seeing, which the millennial, the millennial generation are having are forming families and having kids later than previous generations, and the generation now, next-gen, Gen Z, whichever one you want to call it, they're the the rates, you know, at least the early data, you know, and for the early child, it seems that that's slowing down even further. Now, how does that impact, though, versus, say, international migration? And we've started to see some net international migration back in the region, which is the only reason we've had population growth in the last few periods. And of course, that, you know, that had gotten really small because of the previous presidential administration policies, as well as, of course, COVID, you know, shutting a lot of that down. And so what we see, though, is when we have different cultures come in, and these are not necessarily, we're not all thinking about the stuff that's coming in buses out of Texas or something or another. For us in this region, international migration is just likely to be professional families coming in to work at the World Bank or something like that. But demographically, you see more kids.
This this didn't come up. I know we have other questions, but I also did want to make this point, that we worked we worked pretty hard to try to figure out the timing of Broad and Washington and West Falls Church, when those come on. So if those come on sooner, you get more kids quicker. Okay, because like like we mentioned, it takes a little while to lease these things up. We've actually been in touch with some buildings that got leased up recently and built in a leasing rate. So two big things that make Kristen's job an absolute nightmare are those generation rates going back up and the timing of those buildings coming online. But so I wanted to bring up that, I don't know what made me think of it, I think there was a question here.
Thank you, and I agree with you, I just want to echo. Unbelievable. But one question I had, and Dr. Noonan referenced it, and I'm sure it already existed in terms of the single-family homes, and we know what's coming on in terms of these commercial development projects. Has there been any, and this may be a city question, but has there been any, have you looked at the number of lots in Falls Church City where the land is more valuable than the house on it as a way to to figure out how many stair downs we have in our future?
In in my world of running the centers, that's called an expansion of scope, and we'll be happy to do that next bit of work for you. But but it actually, it it came up in discussions with the school board to talk about the notion of the, you know, the impact stair down. I and there's kind of count countervailing measures that go off of it because of the the average number of kids you get, once you get above a certain wealth level, it actually starts dropping again. And and you think about it, if I come in today to buy a fifty, sixty-year-old home in Falls Church, and I haven't, I'm going to take a lot of money if I'm going to buy that home, tear it down, and then build up something that's, you know, a five or six, you know, a five-bedroom, for example, not sure a six-bedroom would fit on the lots. But that is something that that staff are starting to look at and consider that, because a lot of that is, how, what are those, you know, how many of them are there? It'd be really tough to say right now, because right now, the housing market is just so kind of messed up from what everybody knows because of the, I mean, think about this, you know, pricing has stayed pretty stable, even though the actual monthly mortgage costs have gone up twenty-five, thirty-five percent with the interest rate rises, right? And yet, housing prices are staying stable. You know, it's just because demand so far outstrips supply in this market. So it'll be, I I just wonder about how many of them are out there where, you know, a structure of any kind is a heck of a lot more valuable than you would generally think. Now, on the other hand, that's really good for the property tax base that you have here.
Question there?
Yeah, could you go back to slide twenty-two, please? The one about commuting patterns?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if I'm reading this right, which I might not be, it looks like roughly less than half of our population, which is fifteen thousand-ish, works. We know roughly, you know, a quarter are children, so that would mean that a quarter don't work or aren't employed, at least according to this, or don't commute. So which is it? And then how does that compare to the regions, to the regional populations?
So two things that you're that you're, any given time, you would expect a labor force to only be a half to a little above half of the workforce, because you have retirees, you have kids, you have people that that are not working, you know, that are not in the labor force because maybe they're home cares. And of course, in this region, that's a, if any of you're having, looking behind me at this guy, if you're any of you're having to pay for childcare.
It is so expensive. It is so expensive.
You just think of the math, if you have two kids, how much money do you have to earn net of taxes to just pay for the kid to be sitting in childcare? Right, so so there's so so any case, yeah, the that's where you get the, that's where you get the differentials, it's just a matter of of labor force participation.
So we would expect, as the population increases, to see that stay the same, roughly a quarter percent of the, I mean, twenty-five percent of the population would be not in the workforce.
It could be, you know, and it just depends, and and see, as the as the general population ages, of course, we've got some trends, right, at the moment, coming out of the pandemic, where, you know, average life expectancy has dropped a little bit, but let's assume that we'll get through this and we'll go back. That number's likely to to change going up. It's also one that we're looking about, one of the things that's a little different about this area is when people retire based on long federal service. You know, you can, you're more likely, if you've been in the federal government for twenty-five or thirty years, you can retire at will. In fact, I think thirty percent of the federal workforce is eligible to retire today, whereas elsewhere in the country, we would, we would see that number to be obviously much lower by people that can retire in their early sixties, right, and and be quite comfortable.
So given that, my my question then is, what are the implications, as you see it, for city services overall, right? If the schools, you have that modeled out, but that doesn't increase as staying as a twenty-five percent of the population?
Yeah.
So if we're having a larger burden on other city services, or do you think, as this happens, given what you see in the trends, these folks are moving out, and so we'll have more people move in? I'm just curious how y'all think about that.
You would, I mean, kind of the the answer that I I would probably give is just given, you would you'd have more people coming in, you'd have more people commuting in to provide services. Would be probably the shortest answer.
I would tell you that the number that surprised me most out of this whole project was that, we talk a lot in planning circles about live-work-play communities, well, you guys don't do that to any meaningful level at this point. And we would think that maybe some of the developments that are coming in might lend themselves more to that. The good news would be, if that number were to grow, then you'd have more demand on on city services, but on the other hand, you'd have more shopping locally, and so you'd have more tax revenues that would be offsetting that. I think the real, in part of the, part of the social issue, and of course, Falls Church is small, you know, so you you can't make too much of it, but the notion of that distinct difference of income of the folks that are coming in versus going out, which basically means a lot of the people that are at these retail operations that you were talking about, increased sales tax are are not able to live in this this area. And of course, as as Dr. Noonan knows very well, it's very tough for, you know, let's say, two teachers who have formed a family, for those teachers to actually be able to live, if they're both working in Falls Church, there's little chance that they're actually living here, unless they're living with somebody's parents.
Are you sure about that four-sixty number?
I am as sure as the Census Bureau is on any of their population estimates.
Okay.
You know, it could be a little, yeah, it could.
It's low, it seems low.
Yeah, it it does seem low, right? But a again, these are, these are estimates that they come out of surveys and they can bounce around a little bit. It'd be interesting to look at them over time, next year, have a look at it and see.
Census survey.
Yeah, but this is, this is part of a census population. Yeah.
It's 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 it may be low, but it's not going to be, I mean, it's not going to be like, even if this number comes up a little bit, like, it's probably not going up to a thousand in two, five years, it's going to stay, that's probably going to stay pretty well.
We got work to do. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So I just need some help making some correlations. So on slide fourteen, we've got a five percent growth, right, on families with kids.
Fourteen.
Mm-hmm. Top line.
Five-year estimate.
Yeah, so twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one, so I see that five percent flip down of the generation rates. And I'm trying to make a correlation as to where that increase is reflected. So I'm assuming it's in the SFD line for all those rows by category?
So we don't, so the these generation rates don't go back that far. This I tried to make that nuance. This is a five-year estimate all the way back to twenty twelve, and so this is going to be, this is a five-year sample where the ACS goes out and asks people over five years, and then lumps those data together. And then in, they do the same thing in twenty seventeen, right? And so what we see is those two, those, both of those estimates are going to be five-year averages, because Falls Church is a really small jurisdiction, so they only leave, they only give you five-year estimates. These particular data don't even go back to the beginning of of this number.
Twenty, okay.
So you're not going to see that growth, and so you wouldn't even see that change, because we don't even go back to twenty twelve.
Now, that's a very smart question, and I would also just encourage you to also remember that when we're doing these, for simplicity of presentation, we have not done these with all the confidence intervals, they get built around them, so you know, we we talk about this being a different number, but I can promise, just like you would with political polling, you know, is the difference of thirty-one and thirty-six percent, is that a real difference, you know, or is it within the margin, or there's probably some of that?
There's absolutely some of that, and this is a good point, and this comes back to something about, this is again, going to give Kristen kudos. We looked at the ACS data, we tried really, really hard to use ACS data to try to figure out generation rates. What Kristen has is dramatically better than anything that the ACS has. And when you look at the ACS generation rates over years, they get quite bouncy. Falls Church is a small jurisdiction. It actually doesn't for, actually, to that point, might as well just talk about it since we're we're on it. This should be Falls Church. Because this would be, this would actually be, no, never mind. You can get into microdata, we don't, this isn't microdata, but you can get into microdata, and those numbers get very bouncy, and Falls Church is actually included in a geography that goes all the way up to Yeah, Potomac Falls. Anyway. So this this goes to this line of what generation rates that we use for single-family, this is, so this is all housing units? Well, basically, this this is another, this is another modeling choice. When you look at generation rates from twelve to twenty-two, it starts at two-point-four, then it comes down to two-point-six, and then it goes back up to two-point-four, and then it comes back to, you know, or it goes back up to two-point-four, and then it comes back down to two-point-two-four. It's going to vary year to year, so we just picked basically a holding constant, we just chose the holding constant. Because because we can tell so many different stories of why it might go up, why it might come back down. It was just a modeling choice.
Thank you. So we read a lot in the regional press about metropolitan goals. So we read a lot in the regional press about metropolitan goals for workforce housing and various other jurisdictions' obligations to help meet those goals. Is there anything in your very granular data about Falls Church that answers the question, are we doing our part? Are we just statistically, you know, should we be doing more? Where do we, where do we stand in terms of our neighbors, who usually were lumped in with them, but you guys have separated us out? So I'm just wondering if you've got anything that helps us answer that question?
The short answer is no. And, but what I would tell you that in, in this sense, you guys are, are building, you know, this is, this region, I've been here for nine years, and I remember when I first got here, that, you know, the, in Loudon, there were only two words allowed, no and hell no. And it, it, it's, it's amazing that you guys are figuring out this way to reshape the built environment in your community. Now, is this going to be enough to satisfy what we have in terms of demand for all housing? I don't know how it comes out proportionately, but the, the only thing is that the, the forward-looking demand for housing in this region is not as dire as it was five or six years ago, but that's because we have more of our residents have chosen to what the regional economists call voting with your feet and are, and are leaving. But I would tell you that I think you are doing as much, and this is pure qualitative, but just from what I've seen, you're doing as much as some, and then you have others that try to do more, like some of our neighbors on the other side of the ocean to the north of us, where they try to do a lot more, and the result is, nothing happens.
I'm going to make that.
You know, you can do the thing about, say, that you're going to, that you're going to put rent controls on properties and things to make things more affordable, and the net result is, since they put that in, they've had no new units built.
So on, on, the one thing that we do have is the activity centers, so you are growing, but, you know, you're kind, that's why I brought up the fact that you're kind of like, you're the front of the middle of the pack. And one other thing that I'll say, and this is something that Terry and I were talking a lot earlier today for wildly unrelated reasons, DC's labor force right now compared to pre-COVID is 1.08, right? So it's only 8% larger than it was pre-COVID. Austin, 1.4?
Actually, that goes back to 2013.
Oh, okay. So 1.08, so we've only grown 8% since 2013. Austin, 1.46. They've grown 46% their labor force. That's a lot of people, right? They've made space for a lot of people, so even if you look at the region, if you, you know, maybe we look better than some of our neighbors, but then if you, you look at other MSAs, we are, we've stalled out for, hold on, let me go back to start. We stalled out for 10 years, so.
I want to go back to the SES data. So I think you had noted that we were noticeably wealthier, like 2X the DC MSA in terms of our, the upper echelons of our income bracket. I want us to contrast that with, I think, what Dr. Noonan talked about in his presentation, where we saw our free and reduced lunch population grow up 37%. Are you seeing that reflected in this as well?
So this goes back to the issue of the five-year sample and Falls Church being so small, even if it were to go up, and I think that the, the data that he referred to, I assume those are year-over-year. We do not have year-over-year stuff yet. Unfortunately, Falls Church is just, it's too small of a geography that we only get five-year averages, and so everything's really delayed.
It, it does. You, you bring up a wonderful point about the, the general thing that we are challenged on so many fronts, and that we are generally wealthy, and we are, and let's face it, I'm going to, I'm, I'm, now, please don't tell anybody out there, but Falls Church is a pretty darn good place to live, and there are a whole lot of people want it, and there are a whole lot of people want their kids going into the school system that Dr. Noonan's running. Either, there is no doubt about that. However, that doesn't also mean that we are not seeing an increase in need across a wide range of houses, and in fact, some of it are folks that are being challenged because of, okay, inflation has, has dropped down to 3.2% on a year-over-year basis, but add up the last couple of years of what it cost you to go to the grocery store, what it did in 2020, and, yeah, and so, you know, there are a lot of folks now that are really economically stressed. The lack of childcare has placed families in the choice of not having as much income. I would wonder, without actually knowing, I would wonder if that shows up in some of the data, where you had people who weren't qualified for a free lunch that had fallen into those qualifications.
So what was indicative for me was, when you take a look at that bar chart on income, what I focused on, on that 2017, 21 bar graph, is that 48% of that population makes under 150K. So I looked on the negative side on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's much lar, that is way larger than my, just even cold turkey going into this percentage that I thought.
It's, it is an interesting stat, and it's kind of so, I really wish we had, you know, more detailed data, you know, other than these five-year averages, because it just builds such a lag. The problem is, you don't have the data to understand, except that school districts live this every, you know, they see the data long before those of us that look at the census data and other places do. So it, it is a trend, and it's those households, and it's, I, I don't, you know, they certainly, we would never ask anybody to start talking about, you know, individual households and to do it, but I'd say that a part of what you're seeing are people who were already here that have now fallen into qualification for supportive meals.
Have we killed you with data?
Yeah, I think we probably have, and it's late. Thank you so much for your patience, and thank you so much for your time this evening.
And unfortunately, we have nowhere else to be, and so if you have questions, feel free to tell to us.
Appreciate it. All right, as your emcee, I've been asked to sort of close up our meeting. Thanks, Wyatt. I just, I just want to say thank you to everybody for your thoughtful comments, your thoughtful questions. We certainly are in a place where we're seeing more students, we're seeing more residents, and now the exciting work begins to sort of be, begin to figure out how to deal with that as a community. So Wyatt, on behalf of you and, and the city council, and on behalf of the school board, just want to say thank you so much for coming tonight, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you. For your hospitality.
Absolutely.
We got a lovely meeting.